Let's call it to order. It's seven on my watch. What the heck? Call it to order. It's a meeting.
That's original woodwork.
Yeah. Okay, so the first item on the agenda. You don't have the red light on. Oh, I don't see it. Oh, okay. I'm used to being able to see it.
She needs the red light.
All right. So anyway, we're we've actually come to order. The first thing we need to do is have a motion to go into executive session for a student disciplinary matter. All right. It's been moved to second to go into executive session for a student matter. All in favor, say aye. All right. Opposed? Okay, we're gonna move it across the hall. We're out of that one with no action. We have any additions or corrections to the agenda, folks? Nothing?
Well, I do think that the executive session regarding negotiations will not be necessary.
Okay, and we'll probably have a second one to finish up.
Yeah, you will probably have to continue with the student deliberation, and then I do have something about administrative contract.
Okay. All right. The other one minor can, under old business, that talks about the WCSU Act 46 Study Committee meeting, it was on the 29th, not the 24th. But that's minor.
Good catch.
We have no members of the public. Anyone have any correspondence? None. All right. Dorin is out working on something else, so when she comes back, if anyone has any questions on the principal's report that she emailed us, we can probably get her then and ask them, but because we are so far behind, let's just keep going. Stephen, do you have a report?
I will make mine short, too. I want to devote my report to our dear teacher Anne Chapman, where all that book. My video, I just wanted to share. And where is the, yes, so as you know, we closed the school with the, I consulted with Joe and presumed the board all supported my my effort to support the grieving process for Anne Chapman. Our dear teacher here for 19 years at Leland and Gray. Started in 1997. And taught English, freshman English, I think, just about everybody that was in school since then has had pattern freshman English. She had a marvelous ability to reach every student, really quite extraordinary, no matter what their background or their ability, or their even interest in English. And so really a very gifted teacher. As you know, she became ill, was diagnosed with cancer, I think, in perhaps as late as November, early December. And we've had a long-term substitute situation there, assuming that she would return. Things went very badly and so we learned of her decease on Tuesday morning at 12:10 a.m. I believe it was. So I wanted to call your attention to an example of the product of teaching and reaching out, which is exemplified by this little book here. This book arrived by amazon.com, as I ordered it, to intend to give to Anne because it's published by one of her former students. It's published by actually Partridge Books, part of Penguin Random House Books. And it's available on amazon.com, and it's called Chasing My Dream: Journey Into the World of Writing. And it has a picture of, kind of a picture of, what do you call it? The demolition piece of equipment there, turning into something writing and with butterflies and all that. Anyway. So this is written by an exchange student. Now often we have exchange students here from other countries, and Way Liam Ng was here from Malaysia. And he actually lived in my home for six months because there was a desperate situation when he arrived. By days before he arrived, we didn't have a home for him, and I was called to fill the breach. People called me because I was from, you know, I'd been to Malaysia. Anyway, his picture's on the back. I'll pass it around. The fact is, he told me one time, when I asked him about school, he said, you know, things are really, it's very hard for me in English. Now, he spoke English very well. And I said, so what's the problem? Well, Ms. Chapman's class. Well, what are you studying? And he said, poetry. Well, that's good. So what's the problem? He says, well, Ms. Chapman gives us a poem to read, and then she asks us what we think the author needs. I said, well, that's pretty common here. What's the problem? He says, well, this never happened to me before. The lecturer always tells us what to think of what the poem is saying. That's why we have the poem. That's why we're studying the poem. And she doesn't tell me. She makes me think. Anyway, the product of, she certainly had an impact on him regarding a writer, and so he's a published author. He's in Malaysia. Became a charter of accounts. He became a CPA in the British system. And he's dropped out from construction and finance and money to write. Could've been a wonderful gift. I'd be able to get it to her in time. I gave a copy to the family, and there is a copy I gave to the school here. I gave a copy to both the English side of the family and this side of the family. This is a part of the bond. Anyway. I do appreciate very much your gifts, and I think we all appreciate the wonderful things that our teachers do for our students here. And it's hard to predict as a teacher what will end up having an impact.
Thanks for listening. Any questions? Other things that I should be paying attention to?
I don't think so.
You do have in front of you the financial report from Bud.
No Bud tonight?
No. And I didn't see, well, I didn't know how that executive session was gonna go, but I didn't want to postpone this time on that. So if you have questions, certainly direct back, but this is your, the date with the percentages.
Real quickly, the total number, we're at almost 85% of the budget that's been spent. With three, four months left and however is left to the school year. How likely are we to go over budget by how much?
Well, yeah, I know that Dorin and Bud have talked about what the latest projection is. Certainly, we're not gonna be under, but I don't, I think the projection was still that we were gaining on the negative fund balance that we inherited. The problem with looking through this, I mean, I would call your attention looking at it home carefully and seeing what these percentages are. Certainly, there are some reasons why some things are over, over the budget because they change from when we approve the budget and what we actually hired for program. And likewise, there are some things that are under. The, you know, when we put these percentages as requested, you have to keep in mind what, and I don't know the details, but for example, support services, general administration at 53%, that's way under what you think. You know, you'd like to for three quarters of the year, you'd like all these things to be exactly 75%. That's not the case. In the end, you noted that we're at 85%, and if in fact, we still have 25% of our expenses left, which I don't think is the case, we are in, we are in April. So we have May and June. It's, you know, I certainly understand the concern. I think that I'll note that Bud should get an email out to the board members and perhaps have it added to the minutes at the next meeting about what the projected anticipated end of year balance is. Fund balance, right? That's the basic question, and I have the answer. Fund balance projection. I will, if I get a moment, I will consult with Dorin and see if she knows something more specific about that end of year. And if you, as I said, if you have a specific question about any of the particular categories listed there, certainly, you know, I would suggest you direct those to, through me, to Bud, or directly to Bud, and Dorin perhaps knows the answer before you leave the meeting tonight.
If you think of it afterwards, just dash off and email to Bud.
Yes. Oh, yeah, the board members.
Yeah, board members. And you can always, you can always ask.
Now, he has listed the year to date encumbrance. But that, don't ignore that third column there, because that really is pointing out to what you have, you know, what is, what is encumbered through the end of the year.
So that, so for instance, direct instructional, direct instructional services, just looking at encumbrance and available. We have 85,000 available, and we expect to spend another 65, almost 66,000. So we will finish under budget there.
That's right. Even though it says 81%. Follow it. Everybody following along there? The purpose of that encumbered column is that, you know, the percentage of expense doesn't mean too much unless you know what you really are committed to have to spend. Right? So, you know, for example.
So when the encumbrance column is larger than the available column, we're gonna overspend?
Driver's ed, for example.
Encumbrances are included in the percent. They must be. Like in the second one, the art, whatever. It wouldn't be over 100, it wouldn't be over 100% if you didn't include encumbrances in the year.
Right. Yeah, see that 12,000, that 12,000, negative 12,000. Yeah, negative 12,000 tells you where you're gonna be.
So if that's all where it's gonna, it can't all be where it's gonna finish. Yeah, I'd like to ask Bud about that one myself. All right. Well, if anybody thinks of anything else, please email.
Well, I, you know, I do appreciate that, the questions, and I do think the fact that we have an encumbrance column and a percentage, I think Kelly certainly requested that meeting ago or so. We forgot when Kelly, but
I hope this helps.
Well, I have to analyze it because it's a little confusing the way it's written, so anyway.
You're right. It could be that the percentage is the end of the year percentage.
But then every line should have an encumbrance, and the encumbrance on the ones that are blank should equal what's left to spend, and then it's a little bit complicated.
Well, I think, take professional development. You've got 48,000, just four lines from the bottom. Let's look at that one, Kelly, because that one has nothing in there.
Exactly.
It makes sense to me that we don't have any encumbered, we don't have anything encumbered that he anticipates we're going to commit to spend.
Sure.
So you'll have that 8,000 available.
Right. So, I mean, following that logic, it means our entire budget, we should be spending at 84.86% of our, and that's not gonna happen either. So we either need to kind of work with one set of numbers or another, and it's okay, Stephen. I'm happy that we've at least gotten this far, so we can just nudge it a little bit as we move forward.
Okay. Well, that's why we're doing it, so we get better, but we need to have the board know. Yeah, I think particularly the following line.
Right. Okay, so moving right along, the
Well, just let me refer, it just, it is apparent to me that what we have available is less than what we have encumbered for the rest of the year.
Correct.
What we have available is, no, what we have available is more than what we have encumbered.
I'm sorry, that's what I said, didn't I?
No, you said it the other way.
I said less than?
You said what we have available is less than what we have encumbered.
Did you hear that out there in the public? They actually have more money than what they have encumbered.
Yeah. That's why the percentages, the percentages, I don't know if that's where we're at now, or where we're projecting to be at the end of the year.
Well, it looks to be it's the end of the year. Yeah.
That's my point.
But it doesn't.
Doesn't make a lot of sense, so.
Should tell us what we've spent, what we've spent so far. We've spent 85% of the budgeted amount.
You would think that, but that's not exactly how it reads, so.
There's something, there's something.
Something's not quite right.
Yeah.
You know, Kelly, it would be good if you had a direct phone call.
Then if you could explain it to all of us.
Well, if you're right, I mean, I think you're, you know, you consistently had the question, which needs to be, you know, articulated and discussed in a way that's gonna be constructive. I'm sorry that I can't help in that way. It'd be great to do that.
And this should be in a format that anybody can understand, correct, including the public.
You should not have this debate about what this means.
What does this mean? Well, it looks like it means this.
Right.
Should be able to say.
Because if, like, support services, it says it's 100 points, you know, almost, if you're 100% of the budget, 100%, like, that's the full budget, like, it definitely isn't. There's little details all over it. That's like, what?
Yeah, you're illustrating the same point, I think, right?
Yeah. Okay. Now, we had the Act 46 Study Committee meeting on the 29th of March. That was the meeting that Stephen Dale facilitated with Leland, there were, there were a number of Leland and Gray board members here, and then there were board members from
Wyndham's, the whole of Wyndham's.
The whole of the Leland and Gray Union.
Yeah, the Leland and Gray schools.
The five sending towns.
The five sending towns. We actually had board members from a couple of other towns, too.
Yeah, Marlborough came.
Yeah, Marlborough came, Dover was here, but
They didn't enter into this.
They didn't really, they didn't really enter into the discussion. It was an interesting meeting. I mean, it was sort of, you know, at the end of it all, when, when different towns were sort of polled as to where they were, you know, it seemed like Jamaica is, you know, Jamaica and Townsend certainly were, were thinking that maybe the, you know, revisiting the red, the unified, you know, the unifying district was, was the way to go. You know, I'm not sure, there was, it was a little less clear where New Brook stood. You know, there was some willingness to work and some concerns about finances and how things would turn out. But those are the same concerns that every school has had at the larger WCSU meeting, where, you know, nobody wants to go backwards. Everybody wants to make sure that the kids continue to, that the kids continue to get, you know, a better education out of this. And that the result is not that kids lose services that they have. There need to be gains there, and that the education stays, you know, at its current level as a minimum. And we're trying to, you know, improve things. And then Beth McDonald, I think Beth was the only Wyndham board member, but
No, Howie was here.
Howie's Leland and Gray board member.
Oh, that's right.
But anyway. And Wyndham, again, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, you know, if Wyndham would absolutely refuse to enter into a study or how they would do it. I think we, you know, probably need to talk to the whole board again. You know, their, their concerns are the same, are very similar to their concerns when we talked about a red, you know, three years ago. And, you know, it's, it's a plot to close the Wyndham School and, you know, consolidate them out. And they want some assurances, but it looks like we may be able to give them some more this, this time. The others, the other surrounding towns, you know, Marlborough, Dover, Wardsboro, some of those, you know, Steve Dale pointed out that, you know, the existence of a pre-K-12 district allows them some flexibility, too. They can then combine and become, you know, pre-K-6 or pre-K-8, and they would have to work that out amongst themselves, district with choice then at the high school level. So their towns wouldn't lose choice, but it would also address the Act 46 duties for their town in terms of, you know, looking at a consolidation. There's another WCSU meeting to talk about Act 46 things next Monday, the 18th. And I'm sure that some of those conversations will continue. Right now, I don't believe there's actually another sort of Leland and Gray meeting planning to happen. And I know anybody else who was there, Patty, Patty first, ladies first.
I feel that it's going to be very, very important, because there are towns that have concerns. Wyndham has concerns. They're scared that their little school that they love dearly will, will maybe close. And New Brook has concerns because they've done the work to do what the state is asking us to do now, and they could lose some of their financial, the benefits that they have created by doing that work. And I think it's going to be very important that we all speak in conciliatory tone and with empathy toward the other schools and trying, or the other, the boards and their situation, and trying to say, you know, well, let's put our heads together and try and figure out how to make this okay for all of us, instead of some benefit and some don't. And I think that's what we're going to have to do when we have a big board. That's what a big board is all about, is making sure that everybody thrives and is successful, as opposed to finger pointing or, you know, just dismissing concerns of the other towns. I think it's real important that we're gonna have to be very sensitive about the issues that the other towns have.
Emily, you, too?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, you're there.
I'm actually having a little hard time hearing some of you, but I did wanna just chime in briefly on this one. I think it should be noted for the people who weren't there that there was a question asked of all the members that were there from the five towns, whether there was any interest in dissolving the Leland and Gray Union High School District, and no one spoke up. So it seemed like it was universal support to continue, at least at this point in time, the Leland and Gray Union School District. And then I, we just wanna caution us to be careful about how we characterize the situation that any town is in right now, because we haven't done any analysis. So while New Brook has done an awful lot of work over the years by merging their two towns, and their tax rates in the past have been quite low, the information that we were handed at one of our earlier meetings shows all of us having very similar spending and tax rates. You know, they're not all the same, but they're similar. So I don't know if we're gonna be at the same place that we were three years ago or two years ago when we were doing the last analysis. So I think that if we're gonna move forward, we should be very mindful that some of the analyses may change around what our situations are. So we don't know how it's gonna affect us. And last thing I'll just say is keeping us focused on opportunities for kids and can we do a better job at what we're doing. That's all.
Thanks.
As a resident of Wyndham, I wanna say that we're being miscategorized as just being protective of keeping our school open. It goes beyond that. For the people of Wyndham to vote to give up our school board, we're gonna have to be shown that our school will be better served by a large central board, and so far, I haven't seen any evidence that that would be the case. That a large board governing many schools does a better job than individual school board governing each school. As far as the advantages of sharing and cooperating, all I've heard is, it's gonna be great. We're gonna share and cooperate, but I really don't see what, nobody's actually said, oh, we're gonna be able to offer our kids this or that in addition to what we have now by giving up our school board. So for, you know, this whole Act 46 thing goes beyond us sitting here and saying, it would be nice if we were running all six schools, five schools in our district together. We have to sell this to the people in our town and show them that it's gonna be better for our kids, and I just haven't seen it happen.
Well, it's an ongoing process. I know that. I do think, Emily, I know, I think the plan is at the Monday meeting, April 18th, that there will be at least preliminary numbers of what things would look like on, with some different scenarios. So that, that'll come soon. But, you know, this is just the exploratory committee. We would actually have to have a study committee and put the articles together and go down that road to get the hard, the much better data and start talking about what the exact opportunities are.
I would just say that Howie is right, that we haven't answered those questions yet, and I think those are, the questions he's asking are the questions we all have, and we all need to answer them.
Yep.
I can just confirm that our office is working on the data to present, to have available to the, to the public on the 18th. It will not be the detail that people seek, but it'll begin to get people to ask the questions as to what more they need to know and what the, what are the important things to look at, so that you can decide how better to proceed in the future. I know one thing, Howie, in response to your comment about what more kids could have, I advocate second language instruction in the elementary school. And our budgets are pretty tight right now to afford them, so unless there's some ability to
But merge schools doesn't increase our budget. Well, you know, we could, if we decide, we've had a traveling Chinese teacher going to the elementary schools in our district in the past when we chose to do that. That's just a matter of the schools deciding, hey, we wanna share a language teacher. We don't need to give up our school boards to do that. We've done it in the past.
I wasn't putting it against the school board. I'm talking about what the opportunities are as we reflect on what is, is available to our students throughout the SU.
I'm all, I'm all in favor of more. I don't think any of our local school boards has, rejects sharing resources, sharing teachers, sharing nurses. As I pointed out at that Act 46 meeting, we shared all teams, you know, when the kids in Wyndham didn't have enough kids for a basketball team, we played, our kids played in Jamaica. You know, we do share stuff, so there needs to be a little bit more than that to make it worthwhile giving up our representation in our town school board, which lovingly looks after our little schools.
There was a little, one little quick one. There was a discussion, a bit of discussion about the idea of advisory boards from all the schools, that, so that schools could feel more comfortable, you know, having, creating some, some ideas for their own school and then reporting it to their representative on the main school board. And that would be a way you could be represented to feel.
How is that better than what we have now? How is that, how is that in any way better than just having our own school board?
I just think if you have a large number of people all looking after all the kids, it just, they all end up here and it
I just wanna hear a concrete example of how that is better. I just don't, you know, everybody has feelings about it, but I'd like to see some numbers. I'd like to see some statistics.
Those are the questions we're gonna answer at the continuing meetings.
We don't have that.
All right. Stephen, something about the Brookline open seat.
Well, I just wanted to mention, I wanna thank the public for their attendance at that meeting on the Act 46. We certainly had a very large number of citizens, non-board members, I think 40 to 50 people attended that meeting. That's pretty impressive. Interest on the part of the public. So those of you out there on the video, keep in mind, Monday's another opportunity to hear the discussions regarding Act 46 by not only the Leland and Gray group, but in fact, the whole SU. Yes, I just wanted to raise the question, call attention to the public as well, of the open seat here on this board for Brookline. It has not been filled. I know the Brookline board, school board has, has been soliciting, you know, interest, part of any citizen of Brookline, but I don't of any citizen of Brookline, but I don't yet have an appointment from that board. They are meeting Thursday night, this Thursday, so it would be possible if someone from the public would like to offer their services as a representative on the Leland and Gray Board of the Brookline School District.
Okay.
Anybody else have any ideas on that?
No.
I wanted to call public attention to it. That's the purpose of this being on the agenda.
Okay. Under new business, we have the VSBA training for school board members and chairs and superintendents too, on May eighteenth, twenty sixteen. I'm actually signed up for that, I know. It's open to all board members, anybody who's interested. These things are, this one's one to seven thirty. It's at Lake Maury. You get dinner out of the deal.
It's Wednesday.
It's generally useful, interesting information. The last one, VIHI was there, Visbit was there. I imagine they're going to, I haven't seen an agenda, but I imagine with the health insurance changes that they'll be there talking. And you get some pretty high-level state officials coming to talk to you. There's time for questions, questions and answers. So, you know, it's worthwhile if you can take a Wednesday afternoon off and go up.
I think I have about three board members from the SU going with me. I know Mr. Anton will be attending as well. So if there are any takers, I think I advise Meg to put out a note again and perhaps a phone call next Tuesday and try to make sure we have the last call from everybody interested so that we can have a, we submit a sign up, you know, in one piece. Show unity here in the WCSU. Let me know if you have any questions about it. The details are available on the Vermont School Boards Association website.
Okay, so policies reviewed and continued with new VSBA model policy codes. Who's, who's the chair of the policy committee?
I don't think we've done that.
We don't think we have a chair.
They didn't have. Well, who's the spokesperson for the policy committee?
I gotta let you just Steve.
Oh, right.
Steven's help.
What we are passing out is the new code numbers, policy code numbers for required policies that we already have. These are policies that we have reviewed in the past. It's just that the numbers are being changed. So you have some idea with what we're dealing with and we found out that they've made some more changes too. We were able to warn two policies tonight. The first one is C twenty-three, student activities, clubs and activities. And I can pass you guys copies of that, pass that down. And we're looking to warn that. And the other one is C thirty-one, which is verification of student residency. And this one actually, it says Dover School, but Leland and Gray, obviously. And these two are to be warned. I don't know if we actually have them there. And then there are two policies that we had adopted, or we need to adopt, right?
I was just going to take the next one down.
Yes, yes. B twenty and F twenty. B twenty is personnel recruitment, selection, appointment and background checks. And the other one is F twenty, which is fiscal management.
I'm sorry, B twenty and F twenty are your?
B twenty and F twenty need to be adopted, correct, Stephen?
Well, yes, they were warned back in February, and I think we lost track in March. I think we were distracted by our organizational meeting. Peter can't find it in minutes that we actually adopted those two policies. They aren't particularly controversial. They were warned because they were a slight change in language from the previous, and they are new model policies from the VSBA.
So we can move to adopt them tonight?
You can just move to adopt those two tonight. You're going to really end up with three motions here, just to recap what I was briefing you on. And the last one we just talked about was adopting these two policies that were warned on February ninth. And then you have another motion that should be warning these two policies that you used to have a hard copy of, because those are new language policies, and I'll explain a little bit more about them. And then the original thing regarding this big sheet of codes on both sides is merely review and continue the language that you presently have adopted, not changing any language. So that doesn't require a warning or posting because you're just changing the code, not even the name of the policy in most cases. The ones that you have in hard copy are interesting because that's certainly new language and you should be satisfied that, that you're willing at this point to post it, that it's warning and have public comment if any is, you know, perceived, as well as board members adjusting or making some change in it if necessary. Clearly, it's, I have a copy that says Leland and Gray on it, but I brought the printed one that I presented to the WCSU board, which was Dover's policy. You change Dover to Leland and Gray, it's the same. That's basically what you'd be wanting. Questions?
So we're ready?
Yeah, you want to ready for some motion? What do you want to do?
I make a motion that we adopt.
Yeah.
Policy B twenty, personnel recruitment and background checks.
Can we do both in the same?
Yeah, and F twenty?
And F twenty. Fiscal management.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to adopt policies B twenty and F twenty. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting those policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Now, let me.
They are adopted.
Point out to the board and the public, when we use these new codes, B twenty and F twenty, if you went online now to Leland and Gray website for policies, you'd see different numbers for those same names. That's because this is the new code from the School Boards Association reorganizing the model codes for the policies. And this will be quite a task for my office to get them all straight on the website for each of the boards, but that, don't expect immediate satisfaction on that one. But if you go by the titles, you'll be okay. And if you go to the Vermont School Boards Association, you can see what the titles and the new codes are there. Let's see. Yeah, that's, so that was B twenty and F twenty.
And F twenty. And I'd like to make another motion to warn C thirty-one, Leland and Gray School District Board Policy Verification of Student Residency.
Yeah.
And C twenty-three, is that correct? Student Clubs and Activities.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to warn policies C thirty-one and C twenty-three. Any discussion on either of those?
Just to remind the board, you did have, the Clubs and Activities was a previous, much less detailed policy. And C thirty-one, you really haven't had before because you, you haven't had to pay tuition other places, and it's not likely that you will. You've depended all the time on your sending towns determining residency. So I'm trying to make sure we have the same policy and administrative procedure across all the school districts of the WCSU, following the experience of Win Hall, Dover and Stratton regarding their residency hearings and what is necessary to be clear with the public to have a successful residency hearing and not miss three people or have them argue about the situation. Now, of course, those places are not operational and so they pay tuition out for everything, and that's, that's a problem. But perhaps some of you in Townsend or Wyndham and so forth, our sending towns, might wonder, why would you have a residency policy? Well, Act one sixty-six says that we have to provide for pre-K education and students can choose, parents can choose where their students go, either to the public or private pre-K provider. So I imagine there'll be some residency questions regarding our pre-K students. Of course, you're not dealing with pre-K here at Leland and Gray. This is just a matter of consistency, but it also clarifies admission to Leland and Gray. So if a parent presents a student to be enrolled at Leland and Gray, these same documents would establish residency and obviously enable them to enroll either on a tuition basis or on a residency, you know, being part of the SU, being part of the Union School District, the five member towns.
Questions?
How, then, this is the Dover one that we see in front of us.
If you substitute Leland and Gray for Dover.
Well, we can't substitute Leland and Gray for living in Leland and Gray, Vermont. So when is like, section one, is that like your?
I have a revision.
What does that sound like? Is it your town?
It won't be posted this way. I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering like how that's going to be.
Yes, it'll be one of the five Union towns. I, I'm going to try to find this and maybe I can actually print it out for you, but I.
I don't need to see a hard copy. I'm just curious how it gets there because it, because it says the hometown.
I'm going to, I'm going to post it once again to you with the new language, because it won't be, you know, there'll be some editing that's appropriate for Leland and Gray.
The motion was for C thirty-one and B twenty-three?
Yes, and you might think.
C twenty-three.
C isn't cat, thirty-one is verification of student residence.
So do I have?
It's student clubs and activities.
And C twenty-three, cat twenty-three is student clubs and activities.
Do I have to do any mending so that it says what, as will be?
Well, edited appropriately.
Edited appropriately?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we won't adopt it until we see the edit.
I think the other one, C, did C thirty, did C twenty-three have the right?
Student clubs and activities, yes.
Yes.
Say Leland and Gray somewhere.
Just says the school.
It's generic.
That's just generic modeling. I'll try to make sure that's clear too.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of warning those two policies, C thirty-one and C twenty-three? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
And, now, for this thing, do we approve this or?
What you have to do is just move that, no, you're move that, that all the policies listed on this two-page document are now considered, reviewed and extended with the new code. You're not changing any language.
But I'm moving something?
Yes, you're moving to recode them and consider them reviewed. This will be to your advantage because it means your language will continue with those policies, and they're all the required ones by law for, you know, five years from this date. So you may have a big load to do five years from now, but.
Okay, I'm, make a mo, oops, sorry.
Yep, sorry.
I make a motion that we. What did he say?
Continue.
Continue.
Continue these policies with the new code.
Continue these policies with the new coding as recommended by the VSBA.
Yeah. All right. It's been moved and seconded to continue our existing policies using the new VSBA model codes. Any discussion on that? Other than to comment on how confusing this is? Why would they do this to us?
Now, by the way, the chart that you have is confusing too. I've got everything in pairs. The first code is what you would find on your present website, and the next code in bold, which shows pairs, is the Vermont School Boards Association site.
All right.
Joe?
Yes.
Can I just, I think it's important that we, I'm not quite sure what that motion was exactly, but it's not VSBA recommending we approve these. It's that VSBA has changed the labels or the coding in order to, from what I understand, what happened was the coding had changed, but it didn't allow for enough space in the numbers to add other ones that came. So it's just simply renumbering, recoding everything, and that was, these are, that's why the numbers are changing for us.
Okay.
It's structure.
So how would I rephrase?
Right, I think the motion, I think we can make the motion clear.
I think the motion, I don't know, I'm just, I heard it said that VSBA is recommending, and it's not really that.
Well, these are, these are all the required. These are all the required policies.
Right.
But it's the VSBA model policy numbering system. And we're just continuing all our required policies using the new updated numbering system.
Exactly. Okay.
Got it.
That's so moved.
To continue these policies with the new VSBA model codes.
Correct. That's what I said.
Second by?
Do we need to mark them as reviewed?
They're reviewed and, yeah, the policy committee has reviewed them all, right?
Yeah, they're, we're not changing them.
Yeah.
Just changing the codes.
Okay. So now we've got our motion straightened. Is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Beautiful. All right. Next is the, I'm not sure why bills and pay orders aren't part of the consent agenda, but you need a motion to approve, oh, can I have the front tear sheet out of that, true? Thank you. We have one, two, three, four, five, five general fund warrants in the amount of seven-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty dollars and sixty-two cents, and three payrolls in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and seven cents, for a grand total of one million sixty-four thousand seven hundred, or eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. Need a motion to approve those?
Move to approve.
Second.
And they've all been reviewed, everything's kosher?
Did you sign all the tabs?
All right. All in favor of approving these, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? No? Motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda, which has the approval of policy B twenty, which we've previously approved in there, so I would say we need to pull that from the consent agenda. That needs a motion, right? To pull it?
We need?
We have a policy that we've already approved in the consent agenda. To pull it out of the consent agenda, B twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the minutes of March eighth.
Second.
There we go.
I was ahead of you there.
Perfect. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
Emily, I'm passing out the hard copy of the residency policy they just warned, properly edited for Leland and Gray. I will send it to all the board members electronically.
All right, is there any other, is there any other business we have to attend to?
I do have one thing that I wanted to call attention, that is that the, we have a timeline for the principal search.
We emailed that to everybody, right?
Yeah.
Yes. If you have any questions about it, just for the public's information, we're closing the applications Friday. There is a resume review committee consisting of members of the staff here, as well as Mr. Anton and me and Abby Dillon, the special ed director in my office, and so we are.
And Joe, right?
And me.
Sorry, yeah. Well, I'm sorry, the resume committee is a group of, you know, six or so. And they're reviewing as many as fifteen, sixteen applicants. I've weeded out a few that really aren't, you know, worth the consideration. Most of the applications come electronically, but I've received a few, well, nearly a half dozen by mail. So we do, we do think we have a pretty strong pool. It looks pretty strong right now. What will happen, the resume committee will review those and perhaps try to get it down to a number in the neighborhood of eight, somewhere south of ten anyway. And then I'll be spending time doing some reference checks, confidential phone calls to see of that group, which are the three, four or so that really are at the top of the, top of the list. I'm tentatively thinking of having those candidates come to the school, one each day for one day, and see the school, of course, but be interviewed by different groups. So what I ask of the board members is who among you may be willing and able to serve on a, on an interview committee that consists of board members, parents and perhaps even non-parent citizens of the towns.
Stephen, what's the timeline?
I was just saying that those interviews would happen the week after our break, although it probably will go into the next week because I know there's some S-BAC testing going on. it probably will go into the next week, because I know there's some S-BAC testing going on, I'm trying to work around that.
But what dates?
Yeah, it starts on around the 25th, 26th.
Of May?
No.
April.
Of April. We're gonna close the, you know, the applications this Friday, and then I'll have during the week, I mean, I'll be able to do some resume checks, although I'm trying not to work next week too much, and then we'll try to set up the, but, you know, I have to have the people able to attend, come, too. But what's gonna happen during that day is, just like we did for a previous search that landed Dr. Dorfman here, we have a student group, I know that Julian and, you spoke with Chloe, right, so I'm certainly counting on our board member, student board members to present to me a cross-section group of students that's inclusive of all perspectives, that would be interviewing the candidates separately, although I will be present to make sure no inappropriate questions are asked. So we'll have, we'll have a student group, we'll have a para-support staff group, we'll have an administrative group, we'll have the parents, community members, board group. You have to just be careful not to have too many members of the board on that interview, because that would be, you know, quorum of the decisive group, so we, and let's see, and then there's, did he have somebody else? I got it all written down.
So you want sure?
Yeah. Anyway, if you go back to the review, you know, you'll see what the time, you see what the different groups were. Oh, yeah. So of each of those groups, there'll be a chair that'll report to me as a collaborative among all those different groups, and then come up with a recommendation. I basically have, I have to make the recommendation, obviously Mr. Anton will be instrumental in this, but a recommendation to the board, and then that candidate will come to the board for an interview or questions, and you can act on the recommendation of the superintendent as a yes or no. That may seem a little different to some people who have a history in small-town governments, governments and school boards. I don't imagine that was the case when you hired Laura Hazard at Jamaica, but the law has changed with Act 153.
Three.
Yep, 153, got it.
The voice of the legislature.
She's listening. Got all those numbers down, Emily, good for you. So, but the goal, the goal is to have, I have in that timeline, the goal is to have that recommendation by the 6th of May. You actually, your next board meeting is on the 10th, and that would be the time when perhaps this final interview would occur, you know, without calling for another encumbrance on your time, but obviously that interview would be executive session, and then presumably it wouldn't take long to negotiate terms for contract and hire, but that's the, that's the timeline. Questions?
I think we should use the 3D printer to make another Dorin.
Right. Well, you know, I've heard that we aren't too far away from having some ability to clone and so forth.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Will we have internal candidates, you think?
Uh, yep. It's, that's a, that's a, you know, an interesting opportunity and complication, but I'm sure that the people, one thing anybody participating is, you'll have to sign a confidential, confidentiality agreement, because you can't take any knowledge or information, or whatever you learn from the various candidates away. Obviously, people who are applying for the position don't want to be embarrassed, or somehow feeling like they're putting themselves at jeopardy publicly by participating in the process. Now, of course, once they come to visit here, they're not gonna know they're a finalist, and, you know, everybody in the community's gonna know so-and-so showed up, so that's, but that's, I think it's the best process to spend that amount of time and that amount of care to hire such an important position. So what I'm asking you is for your interest, you know, either publicly or confidentially, I know Joe is committed, and I also ask you to suggest, if you know of people in your community who may be, you know, important to be involved in this process, to present their names to me, and, you know, I'll do my best to be as inclusive as possible of all. Now, I have to make sure that the committees aren't overly large, but, you know, certainly there's, there's room for diverse opinion, that's really the strength of this process.
I have a question.
Yes.
Will Dorin be able to help with this process, or recommend anyone?
That's not usually the case.
Oh, is she great?
Yeah. I know that she has, should share with me her strong views about who should have the position, so, I mean, when we, I'm determined to enter into a broad search and not limit it to, you know, somebody we know necessarily. That may be the case. Also, we're in a very fortunate position. If we don't have a candidate who's the best of the best, certainly I may recommend an interim appointment, because I don't think, good enough is not, is usually neither good nor enough, especially considering our situation, so, I don't presume what's going to evolve.
Beyond a reasonable doubt.
I do want to take care that I don't present people to the process of visiting the school and interviewing with six different groups, unless I'm quite confident that there isn't something, quite confident that there are no concerns in terms of the references. So I think that's all I'm willing to say publicly at this point, but I'm open to questions, Joe.
On your timeline, you have made their school board meeting, was that just an oversight?
No, I, I thought that perhaps we could schedule a special meeting if we got done that quickly. I don't think that's gonna happen. I think I was dreaming.
And it says you want two board members...
At least.
For the search committee.
Yeah.
Does that not include a chair, because the chair is on the other groups?
Well, we could have as many as three or four, you know, so I'm, I'm open. I just didn't want to, I know you've given a lot of your time. See, what happens if you're on this interview committee, I am quite sure that interview will happen in the late afternoon, if not evening, because of the people involved. My administrative team can probably interview people during the day, the students will probably interview, you know, in a private room during the day. The para-professional support staff, perhaps I can pull together on a day, but it would have to be a consistent time each day, so, you know, there's a schedule to it. But it's a, it's a logistics challenge, but, you know, I just want you to have the opportunity to be involved in this process to the extent that you're able. All right. Great, thanks. So I'll look forward to hearing from you, and a phone call or email, and we'll, I tend to, I intend to make my appointments to the committees before the break, if possible, I mean, you know, by the end of the week, but I can't say I'll have everybody in. I make calls to people.
All right.
So, Steven, I, just so you know, I'd be happy to do it, but I wouldn't be able to participate until after May 7th, or 5th, or something like that.
Yeah, that's your, that's your estimated German, huh?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll keep that in mind, certainly...
And I think that's gonna be late.
Yeah, certainly you'll be involved, hopefully be able to attend, you know, the meeting with the board.
Yeah. I'll make sure I am there.
Yeah. Thank you, and thank you for, you know, tolerating the Skype situation and participating as well as you can. I know it's not as good as being here, Emily, but I do appreciate your participation.
We were taking, just so you know, we were taking marijuana testimony in house ed until about 5:00 today, so I just couldn't make it down there, I had another engagement, couldn't do it, sorry.
It's all right, virtual Emily is better than no Emily.
I have my indicators there.
All right, so we finished the executive, we need to go back into executive session, but that's it, right?
Yes, now we will have to, we will have to have some executive sessions now, just to be clear, is there any other, other business?
No.
Okay. So we have an executive, we will not have an executive session for negotiations. We will have a, and the negotiations, by the way, that are under, being undertaken are the ones for the para-professionals and the support staff. Everything's very positive, but I just don't have the, the, the closing details to be able to call for a ratification vote, so there's no sense to go into executive session about that master agreement, that's a union agreement. Are there questions about, about that? You don't know what I'm talking about here, this is for the support staff at WCSU, that means paras and support staff, Leland Gray, and Nublin, are members of that bargaining unit. But I do have some reason to inform the board about the possible administrative contracts in my office for FY '17, and I say possible, because nothing's concluded, and then I have, we have another session we need to continue from before regarding the student matter, right?
Yep.
Right.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for administrative contracts.
First.
First.
Okay.
Who votes?
Drew. Drew.
Second.
Second by Patty.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session for administrative contract matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so just one quick question. When we come out of this, there's no action, right?
There's no action on this issue.
There's no action on either issue that's gonna be public, right?
Uh, right, that's, that is...
So, we can send everybody home and, and just finish it up and be done?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right. The reason why you don't have an action regarding the student matter is because that's a confidential...
That's a confidential matter, that never comes out.
All the way through.
All the way through, right. The administration will do what they're gonna do, and that's it, and, you know, all we'll have left to be public is to adjourn.
Adjourn.
So we can email you the adjournment time, and we're done.
All right, thank you so much.